Good evening. I'd like to call North Dakota City Council Study Session for date for Monday, October 27, 2025, to order. And it's time I turn it over to our Assistant City Administrator, Mr. J.D. McCauley. It's all yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we normally do, we go review our upcoming council agenda, and I'll kick that off, and we'll go right into old business that we have in senior packet. And the first items that we would go over, items five through nine, you've already seen, and they are linked there related to the budget. So I'll pause for any questions that you may have. We've kind of gone over that in nauseam. See if you guys have any questions. Please let me know, and we'll address them. Hearing none, we'll move on. Still in old business. This, the designated high and fortunate area in Riverside Village, we talked about that a little bit in detail. Just letting you know, that's out for bid, and we have one respondent for that contract for towing company, and we'll award that bid. We're looking to make that active. You'll see action in Riverside Village probably in 2026, early, because we stopped to do signage and communication with the businesses and residents. So there's still more to do there. This is just the first item there. So any questions on that item?
What's the, what's the status of the Ballard project? Is that something we're still bidding on?
That's already been out for bid, and they are on order, and they're on their way. Tom, I don't know if you have a better update than that, but that was the latest that we, we had. Our goal is to have those in before the baseball season. So that's, that's something we're very much tracking.
Were we able to use Dennis's idea about baseball bats in front of the stadium?
We did not this round, but there's opportunity for more. So we went with the minimalist approach, to try to save money. So we put them where they're most needed for this go-round. Yep, okay. Hearing no questions on that one, we'll move right into the last item of old business, which is moving the elections to correspond with the federal general election date. We had a robust discussion on that. See if there's any comments on that from the dais? Questions? No? Okay, great. Then moving on into new business. This is the first item. We have, I believe Ricky has a picture of this just to go with, so you know exactly where this is. But this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, positive recommendation for annexing plus or minus 67.45 acres for Hammond Pond Road, a development up, as you can see there on the picture, is just off Martin Town Road going up to the Savannah Barony area. So I'll pause for any questions that would come in. They're looking, it'll be zoned, zoned for a single-family detached homes, about 94 is what I have in my notes from Tommy. I believe it is large acre. Tommy, I don't know if you want to jump in?
It's like a third of an acre, I think.
R14, a third of an acre?
That is correct.
Was there any feedback or any important insightful conversation from the Planning Commission on this, Tommy? Because again, I guess the only thing that hit me is the entrance coming in and out is going to be one road, which is Hammond Pond Road. And it has that curve there where the little building is.
You are correct. There was, there was no, that's a little bit beyond where we're at now.
Okay.
This is just the annexation. We have not gotten into the site plan or the preliminary plat.
Okay.
One of the things I want to look at as we do this preliminary plat is see if we can get a connection in it, Chana Claire, backside there, Renfield at Chana Claire. And also, and this may not be popular, but you see where it comes to the backside of the rapids. If we could get a connection there as well, that would be good for all three of those neighborhoods to have interconnectivity. The rapids is, I think there's been a couple times already where the rapids had a tree go down, and of course during the hurricane, public safety couldn't get in there. That's something we'll look at whenever we get into the development part of it. But right now, it's just the annexation to bring it into the city.
Have they given us any idea how many houses it would be?
Ninety-four is what they're proposing. Ninety-four at the R14.
Where is the traffic light at Napcon in relation to the map here?
If you look at, if you look at Old Plantation Road up at the top and take that out, that gets you in the neighborhood. It's sewn to the north here where that traffic light is. It's kind of under Exhibit A.
Got it.
Is Plantation Road in the city or not?
I think it depends where you're at.
I think it's in and out.
Only one time it wasn't.
Most of it's county, but there's a little bit of the city. That's what we talked about.
Because that's what several years ago, people didn't want that. And you know, if so many people are annexed, I mean, like this, would it affect other homeowners who are not annexed?
No, ma'am. Not, it will. That's a loaded question. It'll affect them because there'll be development in the neighborhood. They won't have to come to the city unless they've signed an annexation agreement and just put some contiguous.
Were many at that meeting, was anybody opposing this?
There was nobody there to oppose it, and it was unanimous from the Planning Commission. And as I told them in the Planning Commission, this is a case example of a donut hole. And I came from a planning aspect with Savannah Barony and the rapids, the type houses that you have around there, I sure like, you know, from a planning perspective, large lots rather than somebody wanting to do R7 in there.
Quick question. Is there a reason why they want to annex?
Yes, or they want water and sewer.
That's what I'm saying, but just want to clarify.
Thank you, Tommy. Thanks, Tommy. All right. Any other questions on this item? Nope. Hearing none. We're going to move on. Still old business. I'm sorry, still new business. The next, the next item is for a non-exclusive franchise agreement for Loomis Fiber. That's T-Mobile. So we have these franchise agreements in place for other, other providers like AT&amp;T. This is just gives us another one for the area. The hopes would be give our citizens more options. And so this just grants them the non-exclusive franchise agreement, lets them come in and get into our right of ways and access our citizens. So any questions on this item?
Is there, you know, I'm assuming this is not, is this going to be the entire city limits? Are they going to focus on a particular, particular area? I'm assuming to be certain parts at a time. I doubt they do it all at one time.
Correct. There are certain parts at a time, and there's actually a representative here if you'd like to ask him questions directly from, from Loomis.
Well, I guess my question is, so this would be like any, any other, like I know on Stanton, I guess on Stanton, I know in AT&amp;T a couple of years ago, they were laying some more fiber, and you know, they're right there, they're in the right of way, but you're still people's front yards.
Correct.
You know, we had, you know, we still had calls even in Tom Caesar's house. That's how many of your calls as far as doing that the right way. So is that basically what they're going to be doing?
Yes. We've already had a preliminary meeting with them, and the main focus was, they got with our utilities folks who are identifying where the lines are, but also their main focus is customer service. They're going to have, you know, notifications. They're, they're going to have a customer service line. If somebody, you know, gets in the yard, hits a line or hits something, disrupts somebody's residence, they have a way to handle that.
I think that's the thing that's been lacking in my experience.
Yes. We also agree. They've been successful in areas like travelers' rest and other areas throughout South Carolina, and they're known for their communication upfront, even though, as you know, going through right of ways and doing this type of work, they're, even though there's things are well marked and well, on, well marked on paper and on maps, sometimes they're not exactly where we think they are with pipes and things underground, and there are times where they're going to hit things, water lines and that type of, that type of thing. So we're prepared for that. James and his team has met with them to start that process.
All right. That's all I had on that.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? And then if hearing none, we'll move on to, the next two are kind of the same, just different areas. They're deeds of dedication for, one's for Forest Bluff, Section Two, and the next is for Martin Town Ridge. And so these are just accepting the deeds of dedication kind of routine actions. So I'll kind of bundle those together, even though they're separate areas. Any questions on those items? Hearing none. We'll move to the next item, which is Boards and Commission will appoint members to the Municipal Election Commission, and then we finish out with administrative reports, and then questions from citizens. And that's, that concludes the, the agenda review portion. Any generic questions or general questions about the agenda? No? Okay. And as is practice, we are moving on to Department Details. I'll turn it over to our city clerk, Jamie Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First off, for Department of Details is Finance Director Linda Williamson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to let you know that our Cycle One due date is November 3, and again, those bills were mailed out timely on October 9. Our Cycle Two due date is going to be November 17. Bills were mailed out timely on October 24. So that has completed three full months of timely billings with the new software. So we're happy to report that.
Our bills have timely been debited from my checking accounts.
Well, good, good, good. Our tax sale is still scheduled for November 3. I have an update to the number. There are currently 41 properties that are headed to the tax sale at this point. The last update I gave you, there was 62. So we've had 21 people come in and get those corrected. And so they still have another week to get that number back down. And again, those listings are updated every Saturday for the three Saturdays prior to the tax sale. So each, each week, we update the list with the current amount of people going. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Human Resources Manager Kayla Ferguson.
Evening, Mayor and Council. If you look on the back of your Department Details, you will see our list of employment opportunities.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you. Next up is Plan Development Director Tommy Paradise. We can go back up. Engineering and Public Works, Tom Caesar.
Good evening. Just one quick update tonight. In the 2025 budget, there were funds approved in the Stormwater Department for contract services for performing detention, stormwater detention facility maintenance. And so we have engaged a contractor, and he will begin that work tomorrow. And over the next two weeks, we'll complete a list of approximately nine facilities and out of over 50 that the city currently maintains. Anyway, those, that work will be in the Rayborn Point, Wanda Woodlands. Anyway, those, that work will be in the Rayborn Point, Wanda Woodlands, Bergen Place West and Gregory Landing subdivisions.
Thank you, Tom. And now Planning and Development Director Tommy Paradise.
It was just a test to see if me and Tom were listening. BZA meeting is next Tuesday, November fourth.
Next is Public Service Director James Sutton.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to update y'all on some ongoing wastewater rehabilitation projects. The first one is I Interceptor Project, that location of that pipeline. Twenty-eight thousand feet of pipeline that runs from the Rapid Subdivision, proceeds parallel to the river over to Clay Pit Road, which is the entrance to our operations facility. Right now, SAC construction is completed lining and structurally rehabilitating twenty-eight thousand feet of the pipeline. So that portion of the job is complete. Have about twenty-four brick manholes to reline as well. And then what's remaining, and we had them scheduled to come next week, but they're not going to make it. I got informed of that this afternoon. So they're going to have to provide us with a date to be determined when they can arrive here to replace possibly five hundred and twelve feet of a pipeline. Some portion of that crosses underneath the atomic road. So they're going to pipe burst that so they don't have to open cut it. That's remaining to be done. And then we have a sectional aerial pipeline that's along the Greenway Trail, about five hundred and forty-six feet. It's going to have to be replaced. So that project's moving well. The scheduled completion date is December thirtieth of this year. Our second project involves twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fourteen feet of eight inch clay pipeline. It's going to be rehabilitated in Cresslin subdivision and Lenhurst subdivision. Right now Champion Cleaning Specialist is working wrestling to reline those pipes. And also after that, they've got about twenty-four manholes that they're going to rehab. That project's moving forward as well. So we anticipate that to be completed in April of 2026. And finally, the Carolina Springs Lift Station that's been in operation since the fifties. It's up to, it's been rehabilitated and replaced through the years. And so we're going to replace it again. The manufacturer is currently making the station. We expect it to be delivered sometime in April. Prior to delivery, we're going to have crews go in and replace the onsite wastewater main. We're going to change the elevation of that. We've got some concrete to cut on some of the structures to make some manways. And we also got to demolition the building. That project's scheduled to be completed also in April of 2026. To throw a little bit extra into it, it's not approved yet. I know administration going through our city administrator, we're working to add probably about another twenty plus thousand feet of pipeline to the subdivisions around Cresslin and Lenhurst. That hadn't been approved. It's a request that we're all going to make. And in addition to that, we currently got a request out now to rehabilitate eight thousand fifty-three feet of fifteen inch pipeline that serves the industrial park off Ravco Road. So hopefully we get those two projects done. Total cost of all combined is going to be about eight point eight million dollars. We're pleased with the performance of our contractors. They have come to town. They've been doing a real good job. And we look to have that pipeline last hopefully another hundred years like these have done.
James, let me ask you, the part about the Greenway, what area is that? Is that something that people will be seeing as they're walking? In case we get asked, hey, what's going on? Do we know where that is?
Yes, sir. They're going to do atomic first. We're going to put out public notices. But that section there is to the west of the Activity Center. It's probably a few hundred feet down to the left. You can see the aerial pipes. Actually, a portion of that was damaged during hurricane. So we're going to put a solid steel line all the way across from one end to the other. And there's been some trees and stuff that's been removed. So hopefully we can eliminate any future problems in that area.
I know where that is. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for all your efforts. I'm serious. Working hard.
Thank you, James. Next up is Chief Johnson for Public Safety.
Good evening. Just a couple of things we got going on. We're participating with the Edward County Sheriff's Office with a national night out event. It'll be tomorrow night at Sweetwater Baptist Church from five to eight P M. And also our Citizens Academy is still ongoing. They have two more weeks and it will be scenarios in those two weeks before they graduate.
Thank you, Chief.
Next up is Parks and Recreation Director Rick Meyer.
Good evening. This week in our youth athletic programs, if the rain will let go, is peak out week. Our young athletes and their parents will be wearing pink in honor of breast cancer awareness month. We know for sure we'll get to do that in volleyball because we play inside on Tuesday and Thursday.
Is this the first time we've done this?
Uh, no.
Yeah, okay.
We actually, we actually kind of kicked that off last, probably last year. So.
That's great. That's good.
Yep.
Very good.
Also this week on Saturday at the Activity Center, we have Kid Jam two thousand twenty-five. You'll have arts and crafts. You'll have inflatables, touch a truck. This is going on ten to four in the entire facility, including the parking lots. Yes.
The Rex doing this or is it Brandy Mitchell?
It's Brandy.
Brandy's okay.
Yep. And we are still continuing registration for our youth basketball program on time through November the tenth. And also when the rain lets up this week, you'll see us installing hometown hero banners with Veterans Day. Coming up November eleventh, they'll be up approximately three weeks before we transition to Christmas. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. And to close out, we'll be Tourism Manager Carl Waldhauer.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just reminder that our first annual wine walk will be held at Sharon Jones Amphitheater on Saturday, November eighth. Beautification Foundation is hosting that event and they got an early bird special going on for tickets right now through the end of October at North Augusta Wine Walk dot com. I've been in a couple of planning sessions for that and they got a great lineup for that evening. October's Explore North Augusta podcast will be released tomorrow morning. And this month's episode is put notes to the past, along with our host, Mayor Williams. We have Millich Murray and our very own Kelly Zier going, going this month, talking about a little about history of the area. And as Mayor Williams mentioned last week, our mobile app was released and had quite a few downloads. And saw a lot of people using it, a lot of positive comments over the weekend. We kind of used it. We've scattered QR codes throughout Jacklaren Jubilee and a lot of folks use it as an info center. Either find, you know, schedules or, or where vendors are and maps and all that. So. So far, so good. It's, it's doing really well. And obviously the trolley aspect of it has been, has been helpful for sure.
Just thank Carl and all the people with the Jackland Jubilee, which was a big, big success. Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it back over to Assistant.
All right. Great. Thanks, Jamie. We're moving right along to item three. Our focus item is our quarterly update for economic development Riverside Village at Hammond's Ferry. Linda Williamson, our Finance Director, will be presenting to you as per usual. Linda, take it away.
All right. Well, first up, this is our quarterly voluntary report that we upload to the Electronic Municipal Market Association. You can find the full report uploaded there. If you'll go to www.mma.msrb.org, you'll, and search North Augusta Public Facilities, you will find that report. It is also uploaded onto our website under the Financial Transparency tab. So the first few slides of this presentation are the exact same slides that you've seen at the last presentation. If you have any particular questions, I'm happy to, to answer those, but this is the same information from the twenty-four audit. And we can slip or skip over to slide ten. That's it. Local hospitality tax. So as of September thirtieth, the city's collection has been two million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. This is up from the one million, nine hundred and seventy-three, six hundred and forty dollars from last year at the same time period. That's about an eleven percent increase over the same time period. We are averaging about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a month for hospitality taxes. And with that number, I anticipate that we should be on track to surpass last year's total by two hundred and forty thousand. Or that'll be about a nine percent increase. And just a reminder, only one of the two percent collection rate is designated for debt service. And our financial model expected about nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to come in of that one percent. So we have once again surpassed that amount in the third quarter of the year. Obviously, our hospitality is continuing to do very well. And I expect to see it continue with the addition of new restaurants like Carolina Hills and Brink's Tavern and Top Crab. Next slide. Lost my paper. All right. Accommodation taxes. Again, our accommodation taxes are three percent in the city, but only, only the Crown is designated for debt service. But we have to show the full amount because we can't show Crown's only amount. But at this time last year, our collections were three hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So we are looking at about a hundred and five thousand dollar increase over the same time period last year. So that's about a thirty percent increase. Pulled True Hotels numbers and it looks like over this past year, they've had about a fifty percent increase on their revenue. So they are actually continuing to provide that healthy A tax number to us. So we should kind of see things. Hopefully, I mean, we'll see an increase next year as well, but it'll, it should be all the hotels increasing together. All right. Next slide. Our tip revenues are right in line with where we were at last year in 2024. Again, our tip revenues are exceeding our projected revenue. Our financial model indicated we would see about two mil, two and a half million dollars coming in. So we've exceeded that by about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have paid our three hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment to Aiken County per the intergovernmental agreement, as well as an additional three thousand dollars to overlapping tax entities. That's required when our county receipts grow by three percent or more. We've actually only had two years where we didn't make that additional payment. Next slide. This is just the mid-assessment, mid-assessments. And again, that hadn't changed since the last update. They're all paid in full. Next slide. Oh, parking. I'm happy to report a positive number in our parking revenue. It is trending that direction nowadays. The new owners of Crown are agreeing, abiding by our parking arrangement that we had set up originally. And again, as a reminder, that is a net revenue number. So our expense, our parking expenses are coming out of that gross revenue amount. Next slide. Stadium revenues. So we got our emission, our second quarter emissions tax from the green jackets. But we also got another check from the South Carolina Coordinating Council. We ask for these funds every year and this year they decided to pay us. So we, we got about a sixty-two thousand dollar check from them. And it's, it's an agreement that we had set up with the tourism infrastructure program.
Just the state?
Yes, sir.
Well, we, we get this every year. We have to submit.
Well, I ask for it every year. The last time we actually got a check from them was in 2020.
What is it they're doing? Where's that money coming from? It's revenue from the state tourism?
Yes, it's from this, it's from the State Tourism Department. So it's different from the emissions taxes that the green jackets are collecting.
And what makes them give it this year, not next year?
I was looking into that and I, I don't have an answer. I've requested it every year and this was the first year we've gotten it. Now, I know when the green jackets sold their sold or got bought out, we, there was a problem where they did not close out, or they closed out their emissions tax, but the new company didn't open one up. So we had to get that taken care of. So that probably was one, one indication as to why we weren't getting those. But they have now released all the funds back to us and we got a big old check. So we probably won't see that about amount next year, but we should start seeing that number a little bit higher than the past four years.
Keep asking.
Yes, I will keep asking. And everything else is, is going well. So we've received all the rental payments and the performance license fees. And then we will see that naming rights in December. That's when they, the green jackets are supposed to pay that. So overall, we'll see a small gain in total stadium revenues for the year. And that is all I have tonight. It was quick and simple and positive.
All right. Thank you, Linda. And that concludes our portion of it. And turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, to close it out.
Thank you. All right. Wanted to do like I said I would do and give an update on the animal shelter. So as I mentioned, I believe it was last Monday, on October the twenty-eighth, Tyler will be meeting with Captain Hayes and I think Chief Johnson, as they both will have their list. And from that, they are going to come to agreement of three projects for the current shelter. And then depending on what those projects are, some, they may or may not come back to us. Just depends on what that looks like cost wise. So that's moving forward, which I think is very positive. We are, after one more reading, if that does get approved on Monday, we will have officially put in the budget for next year, starting in July, for a new animal shelter worker. That will not be a P S O. That'll be a person at the actual shelter, which I think has been what's asked. That'll be able to work with volunteers there. I know some people have been, or wish we could do it in January. But you know what? It's been six years to get to this point. So we've just got to be patient for six more months, but we are getting it. So that's good. And I'm really glad to finally share about the committing. So since two thousand nineteen, I've kind of written this out. So I'm going to kind of read it and talk, talk it out. It's been discussed the need of a working coalition being established related to animal control within the corporate limits of the city of North Augusta. The report that was done by Team Shelter USA in two thousand nineteen is very thorough and obviously prepared by an organization has great concern for animals. The report specifically recommends the establishment of a partnership that capitalizes on the strengths of all different types of organizations. It refers to city leadership being encouraged to create a coalition set forth therein, propose recommendations for that coalition. Our city attorney, our city attorney interprets the report that the term city leadership to refer to representative of the entire city and not just referring to the city of North Augusta, elected officials or employees. I have stated that I would assist in assembling a committee in accordance with suggestions in the report. In the effort to get this committee moving forward, I have talked with a number of individuals and would recommend these persons be assembled to, to be on the committee to provide the proper representation. I suggest the following city residents be utilized as initial committee. It's been asked to have representation from the city. We'll have representative of the city. We'll be North Augusta. We'll be Captain Kevin Hayes and City Councilman Robert Freitas has agreed. The report asks for the city to come to the table and we are. They will be the liaisons from the city to the committee. They will not be proactively asking for money or being officers of the committee. They're there to give the city's perspective and to be a city resource to the committee. So I appreciate Councilman Freitas willing to do that. We will have a representative from the local veterinarian community. That was a concern. That was in the report, but there was a lot of concern that we haven't, they hadn't been able to do that. And thanks to Councilman Tool help, Dr. Lars Santos will be, she's a local vet here in North Augusta. She, I talked to her actually Saturday at J O J. She cannot be more excited. She's a business owner and a local veterinarian with a very good reputation. So I'm excited about that. I've asked, we were asked Tabitha Waldrop. Tabitha has been, I know, helping Tyler with some strategic planning for Fona. Her background's project engineering and management. So I think she's going to bring a ton of experience in her, in that background as far as planning. I've also, we've also asked Representative Community at Large Laura Nichols. Some of y'all may know Laura. She used to be a former owner of a pet store here in North Augusta and I believe she was early on. And I believe she was early on, uh, very involved in the, in the early stages of Fona. And then the other Representative for Community at Large is Ms. Dawn Porter. Dawn brings a CPA background and what I think is most instrumental in working with the Charleston County Animal Shelter. All these folks, I think these are the two keys. They all are passionate about animals, but they also bring the ability to be objective and proper perspective of how to move forward. I want to make it very clear that this is not a committee and this is kind of where I kind of one sure the direction. I kind of said some things probably when I said I got over my skis, but as we thought through more about this, I want to make it real clear, this is not a committee or a part of any foundation in the city of North Augusta. As I've already said, but I will repeat, the city of North Augusta is not going to fund or run any future animal shelter. It, what's important, this is an independent working committee composed of representatives of the community, as suggested by the report. This group can decide if future members need to be in the city limits or not. That's up to them. I just believe this initial group needed to be city residents. This committee will be the organization that gains community support, raises money for future short-term improvements to the current shelter and looks for ways to raise money to build and contract with an organization to run a future animal shelter. They will be able to decide their own mission statement, what short-term, long-term goals, if they need to be a 501(c)(3). The point is they can run this committee how they think is best. I think they will be successful because you've got a current business owner, a previous business owner, a project manager and a CPA background. But all those people are passionate about animals and they want what's best for the animals in North Augusta. So, um, I think that's very positive. I'm very excited about this group. I've talked with all those, all those people. They are very excited to be involved. Uh, kind of the next step is I will be sending out, or I'll get Jamie to, we'll be sending out an email, group email to each of these members that I mentioned with everyone's email and cell numbers. And then it will be up to you folks to kind of begin a communication among the group and move forward. So I appreciate everybody's patience. Uh, I'd set a goal, uh, hopefully within 30 to 45 days. I think we made it at 29. Uh, so, but again, I want to thank this council, you know, we can say a lot of things, but what I don't think you can say is that we aren't, we are not, not making progress. So we're doing something that hadn't been done since 2019. So I'm excited about what Tyler and the city will come up with project wise. I'm excited about having a new person. I know Dennis said he never thought in his lifetime we'd get a second worker. So, uh, I think that's positive. And I think this committee, again, is going to give the structure and the foundation of what's needed for this community to move forward with a new animal shelter. So the last thing I have is I just want to again, thank everybody, again, the entire employees and the citizens of North Augusta. If you like me, y'all have gotten positive, nothing but positive response. Uh, y'all are down there with your whole, with your family. Just John Phil like had, never seen John Phil like have so much fun. But he and Mary had a big time. But anyway, just a huge, great, great crowd. The day was, the weather was, like Kelly said, the weather was perfect. I mean, if it had been the day, we'd be in trouble probably. Uh, but great weather and everybody came together and just real, real excited about this J O J. So with that, I go across anything for good order. You got anything, Ms. Pat? You got anything? Anything? You good? All right. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Y'all have a good evening. We stand adjourned.